...presentations and awards, no scheduled delegations. We're just moving right on to unfinished business, which is the discussion of the FY12 budget. Mr. Himmelberger?
Thank you, Mr. Spitz. As everybody knows by now, we are in the midst of a very difficult budget process. And many of the reasons we've outlined before, certainly the fact that FY12 was predicted to be the most difficult year by all of the experts, and this time they hit it right on the button. Our recession is much slower to recede, and therefore the revenues coming back into the state, which are largely dependent on sales tax and income tax and capital gains, are much slower than anticipated. We also know that the economy overall is still struggling, and the federal money that we had over the last two years is up this May, this June. So for a variety of factors, we are facing the ultimate challenge. As everyone knows, two years ago in FY10, the teachers in the OEA stepped forward and took a zero percent raise with all steps frozen. And that set the tone for the entire town to also take a complete zero that year, which enabled the town to make it through FY10. FY11, almost everybody on the school side also is working at a zero raise. And for some folks that work for this district, the last raise was July 1st of 2008. We are struggling right now with a gap that is large, and we don't want to minimize that. The budget that we have brought forth is purely a level services budget. That budget is only taking the programs and the staffing that we have this year and moving it forward one year. Because of that, and given what the town's revenue projection has set, we are facing currently about a $725,000 shortfall. Now, if you recall, the initial budget that we presented on Valentine's Day was about 15.1 million. The town's revenue projection was 14.1 million. That math unfortunately is very easy. We have since had some relief on Circuit Breaker. We have made some further reductions based upon what we see happening, both locally and at the state and federal level. And so our current proposal is at 14,878,000. That is before we address several tiers, and that unfortunately is spelled T-I-E-R-S, not T-E-A-R-S. Several tiers of cuts. Obviously, in a budget that we have, the large majority of this budget is salary. We are a people organization. We do not have anything extra in that budget that we brought forth at 15.1 million. I would ask anyone who wants to certainly stop in. Mr. Matthew or I can take them through the budget. It is a budget that is over 80% salaries, about 7% utilities, and about 7% special education costs. And that leaves precious little dollars in that budget for discretionary spending. All of the, as Mr. Yvonne says, all of the stuff that it takes for us to be educators is what is lacking, both programmatically, instructional materials, supplies are already at a bare bones level. So yes, there are salary increases in this budget, but when taken over three years, they are less than 1% a year. And let's not forget, they are well-earned and well-deserved. I believe the administration, and certainly the administrative team, has worked overtime to try and come up with budgets that make sense depending upon the various levels of opportunity. And as I said to the committee last Monday, the school committee can certainly bring their budget number forward if they so choose. I would say that 14.1 million would be a difficult number for us to work with. You could say it would be impossible if you count the impact on our children. Certainly 15.1 million would only allow us to keep the programs that we have currently intact forward in next year. So as the committee has before them, some of the reductions in various levels, and I certainly would offer Mr. Spitz that if anyone has specific questions, that we can answer in open session to either Mr. Matthew or myself. We'd be happy to. It is a difficult and very challenging few weeks that we have in front of us. And we will, we are committed to working together, and certainly the rhetoric sometimes gets in the way, but I think everybody in this room is certainly here for one reason, and that is for what's best for our students and for the children in this town. So that is my introduction. Mr. Spitz, and I would certainly respectfully ask if anyone does have any further questions, we'll be happy to try and answer them.
I'm sure we all have a couple.
Thank you.
Um, I want to start if I could. In our tier reductions that you gave us, the four-tier reductions, nowhere in here do I see anything about the transportation equation. I see that you've given us a separate sheet on that, but that really isn't figured in anywhere into these tier reductions.
Yes. Long before I came to town, transportation was split out as a separate line item, and certainly maybe Mr. Peterson would give us the background on that. In most towns, transportation is incorporated as part of the school's general operating budget. But in Oxford, it's voted as a separate line item. And while we have proposed some options, what we thought might be a quid pro quo, if you will, which was if we could save something on the transportation side, it may be transmitted automatically to the operating budget.
That has to be voted on.
Is not the case, yes. And so that needs to be worked out with the finance committee, certainly town meeting, and the rules of the floor there.
And I totally understand that, but I still thought we really needed to see, because we can submit to the town any budget we choose for transportation or for our own school budget.
Yep.
And if we could show that we've dropped our transportation costs and maintained our level funding, well, that is easier to sell. And that's kind of why I wanted to kind of see how that might impact us. Like, as you had everything laid out.
Mm-hmm.
Yeah, Mrs. Ennis first, if I could.
Well, I just want to answer.
Okay.
Mr. Himmelberger.
As you said, this goes back to '93 with every form. You won't see it specifically in our budget, Mr. Spitz, because we negotiate the contracts, but the town, you will see it in the revenue.
I get all that.
The town pays the actual budget, so my concern is, I'm all for cutting more bussing, but I want to make sure that money will come back to the school system, because if we save, it goes into the, actually into the general treasury, because the town actually...
Unless the town votes on it.
Unless the town votes on it, or they agree to work with us on that if we make the cuts.
Or if we went to town meeting with those changes in effect that we're proposing, the town could officially vote on those changes for transportation, and it would come directly back to the school department.
I don't believe so, because of the way the law and the mandate is written, it still goes back to the town, and you're going to have to negotiate with the town manager and them to get the money back.
Okay. Go ahead.
Just to clarify, Mr. Peterson is correct, as I understand it, that money reverts directly back to the town. It would take then a hold on the floor, motions on the floor, and then a vote for any of that to transfer. And so we are prepared to discuss some of the tweaks and moderations on this transportation budget. However, there is little or no guarantee that we would see that money.
Okay. Mrs. Ennis?
Thank you. If we could look at the four different tiers that we've been presented. Has anything changed in retirements? Is it still just one that we know of?
One and just about two.
Okay.
So we do have two that we can count. This is...
Okay. In tier two, three, and four, you're showing professional staff reduction in all three of these tiers, and I'm wondering what grades are going to be impacted by the staff reductions?
Through the chair, Mrs. Ennis, I am, we are certainly prepared to discuss that. I think that for, at least for this meeting, I am not sure the committee's pleasure or direction in terms of how specifically that we want to be.
If you don't want to tell me specific grades, I'd like to know the schools that at least it's going to impact.
We have, yes, we have reductions planned in all four of our schools.
Okay.
And as you can see on the tier three is where you really see that impact of a couple per building.
All right. To the chair, is there any reason why we can't have a breakout of grades? I mean, we do have, as we've discussed many times, we do have a class-sized policy, so I'd like to see what the impact is going to be on our class size. If we're speaking about specific grades that are very heavy now in class size, I think we need to know where we're going to go with this and what's the direction that you have in place.
Sure. Most of tier three, through the chair, Mrs. Ennis, most of tier three would not have a direct impact on class size. And I know that sounds too good to be true, but it would be through leaves of absence and a couple of other staffing situations that I really can't comment on. So it would not have, and Mr. Matthew, jump in if I misspeak. The majority of tier three would not have a direct impact on class size. Mrs. Ennis?
Then if that's, if this is going to be kind of the way we're going to go around this, I'm going to request that we go into executive session so we can understand exactly what the direction is that the superintendent and business manager have for us, so that we, I mean, you're saying leaves of absence and different things. You're showing one line of leaves of absence, and then we have six lines of professional staff reduction on tier three, and we have five lines of reduction for professional staff on tier four. So I'd like to, we can do it at the end of the meeting or whatever your pleasure is, Mr. Chairman. The other question, is there any movement at all with the town with the health insurance?
I believe that the Board of Selectmen are voting that tomorrow, and so that will go a long way towards pointing that as a possible savings.
And is that a meeting you're attending?
Yes. For a different reason, but I will be there for the middle school project.
It has nothing to do with our budget?
I was not asked to be there for that, no.
That's all I have. Thank you.
Mrs. DeWittsick? Um, Mr. Himmelberger, on the transportation, has there been any dialogue with the town manager as far as this committee looking into that, and if that's the possibility, what's his take on that? Or, I mean, we're talking about going to town meeting and doing that, but that budget line would be already set for town meeting, so that would show the difference reflected if arrangement was made beforehand that the budget would. So it's not something that we'd have to change at town meeting on the floor if it's already been talked about.
Right. We did put out some feelers, and where we thought we would have a direct transfer, we were told that we would not have that due to statute. So I believe that that is still, any option that does exist is going to have to be worked out. I don't, I'm not confident now, given the town's financial picture.
So we haven't had, so there's not a conversation of like, hey, we may be able to save 84, you know how tight we are. If we can save 84, can we use that 84? And someone just say, yeah, that's your budget, both lines. It was like, hey, you can save the 84, but I may take the 84. Is that how the conversation?
We've had the conversation. We've had the conversation with the town's financial team, and it was made clear that any savings on transportation would not be considered to be applied to...
To school.
The school's general fund, general operating budget.
Well, how do we help ourselves if we can't?
There's nothing we can do.
How can we help ourselves if we're trying to look under every rock, and when we're trying and someone says, great, I'll take that money? I'm not sure.
Yeah.
I think actually...
Am I understanding that right?
Well, I think what Superintendent Himmelberger really meant was that there's no automatic dollar-for-dollar, if you save a dollar, we will give you a dollar in your operating budget, without having a conversation with the finance committee and possibly even the Board of Selectmen before town meeting.
Yes. Mr. Peterson?
The reason I brought up the law again, because it was brought up for me, with us discussing that in the last few weeks, it didn't take long to get a couple of phone calls saying, don't worry about it, it's not your money. All right. Also, we have an ominous pending problem anyway. The governor and the senate have come out with a tentative budget, which should probably be out next week after the meetings I did on Beacon Hill. Mr. Himmelberger can speak to Senator Moore's meeting today, but the old cry wolf used to be 15%, then we settled for an 18% local aid reduction the last few years. This year, there's no cry wolf. They're looking at 39%. Quite frankly, if we're lucky, it might drop to 20% local aid, so they're looking for us to help balance their side of the budget with that being set. All right.
A minimum spending, does that include transportation?
No, transportation...
That formula, just operating.
All right. Mrs. Ennis?
I'm going to throw it out there, because if we're going to look under every rock, and I'm just going to throw it out there, it would be, of course, up to the committee to what we do, if we do nothing or if we do something. But I think when we look at some of these numbers, these are hard numbers right now, I think. I think that you see close to $800,000 short. We have a very serious problem. And if you look at the first page with the tab and function codes, and you see some of these expenses that maybe cut playground aids and, you know, three smart boards, things like that, aids in the high school and the middle school, I think that you're talking about peanuts here. But when you look at the larger numbers, I'm wondering, and this is for conversation only, so I don't want to have to have, you know, get beaten up over this, but I'm going to put it out there, if we should maybe somehow ask to reopen talks with the teachers. I don't know how else to get anywhere with this. I don't think, the town isn't going to be able to support it, obviously. We know that. We know that the state is in a bind, all of the states are, it's across the country, it's not just Massachusetts. So how do we deliver education in this community when we don't have the money to fund raises? Now, that's going to probably be frowned upon by the teachers and the administration. I'm sorry, I'm sorry for that. It's not a personal, it's nothing personal. This is an opportunity for us to try to figure out how to rectify the situation, which is a very, very bad situation. We have children that go to these schools, and they're depending on us. So what do we do? How do we go forward? There are some committees that have asked their teachers to reopen and to reopen talks, and they have. I don't know what's happened with them, because they're still talking, so I don't know. I don't know. I don't know what else to do here, because these numbers are so big, there's very little relief anywhere.
Can I just ask you a question first, and then you can maybe answer both of them? What is the actual cost of our salary increases for this year built into the budget with step and lane changes? Do you have an actual dollar number that that's going to cost us?
I don't have it detailed with some of the changes that we've made, but it does contribute to virtually all of our potential increase.
So you're talking about that's going to cost us $700,000 in salary change this year? I didn't think it was quite that much, but, yeah. All right. Go ahead, Mr. Himmelberger.
Yeah, and to Mrs. Ennis's point, and Mr. Spitz, you had brought this up, if you want to look at transportation, we have all of the information that we can delineate the changes that the committee could consider, and they are fairly straightforward. The only issue, quite honestly, would be to get some relief from the town if we were to make these kinds of changes.
But with no guarantees, what's the point of us even looking at this? I'm not going to waste our time and energy going through this whole process, dealing with the busing, dealing with parent problems, when it's not going to help us. I mean, if I have to go through the town again to beg for more money so that I can get my own bus transportation money back into the school department, I'm not going to bother with that. I mean, I don't think it's worthwhile, I really don't. Go ahead.
Well, let me see what I can sneak into my few minutes of airtime tomorrow night for the selectmen, because I'm there to talk about...
I mean, if we had guarantees, fine, I'm great with that. I'm totally great with that, and we should definitely pursue that, but if you're telling me tonight that I can't guarantee that whatever money I save the town on busing is not going to come back to my education side, then it's really kind of a, I don't want to waste my time on it, to be honest with you.
I can't guarantee it dollar-for-dollar, Mr. Spitz, I can't.
All right. Go ahead, Mrs. DeWittsick.
Let's just go for bold tonight, right? I agree with you, Mrs. Spitzer, this is, you know, there's no sense going through this. And to be honest with you, really, seriously, there's no sense going through any of this, because at the end of the day, I can come up with a number, and what you're telling me, if the town says, great, I'm glad you worked four months on that number, this is the number I'm throwing up at town meeting. The only way you get around that is at town meeting, someone stands up and says, I motioned to override that. And that has happened before at a meeting. Unless the town people and the school-aged children's parents come and say, you know, it's more advantageous for us to say, yes, do that, and then from May to July, we all figure out where we're going to find the money, because from May to July, that's what we're going to do. You're going to find out, then you're going to sit here and say, what are these cuts? Because to me, I'm not going to vote for that lower number. I'm going to go for the 15 or the 14.9 and say, that's what I need. Because they're going to tell me, they're going to slap me anyways. I mean, because I need all the money we can find on this. I mean, if we're going to make cuts now, and we're not even assured that we can make some of those cuts and get that money, I mean, it's just a number.
Well, I'm concerned about the health insurance change that we keep figuring into this, into this budget.
You've got to wait all these things, right. All of this has got to wait. That's how I'm looking at it. It's just, it's a waiting process.
Oh, I understand we have timeline, but I would like to know exactly how many people I have to deal with in this process.
I think we have to be prepared, but we have to also put ourselves out there and say, that's what we need. And then it seems like after the town meeting, then after the people have spoken of the town, then we'll know better.
Go right ahead, Mr. Himmelberger.
Mr. Spitz, and I did want to say that the town's financial team is certainly reworking their numbers as we speak, because they know how far down this gap will put us. And so I don't mean to imply that the 14.1 is etched in stone. I also don't want to say that there's a lot of hope, but I do want to say that the town's financial team is relooking at their revenue projections to see if there's any room off of that 14.1. So you're right, it is still, it is still work in progress.
You know, I don't know how the committee feels, but I totally agree with Mrs. DeWittsick. You know, we've all worked so hard and so long for these teachers, I can't be part of this whole scenario. I think we should go to town meeting and just let them tell us we can't have it. Go with the 14.878, because what he's saying right now is the bare bones is what we're down to. Present it to the town, let them vote it down, and then we'll have to deal with it. I mean, because I'm not going to vote for...
I'd go 14.9.
I'm going to motion that that's, that is what I would like to do.
I would second that with the one, I'd go the 14.9. The 14.8 is already cutting all those people.
All right, let's go with the 14...
No.
Right. That's right here.
Drop on the 14.921.
She's talking about.
It's the one that we discussed with the school committee on 328.
Which was 14.908. 14.921, this one?
Yes.
Let's get the number in there, so that's who we're going to go with.
14.921.
431. Mr. Peterson?
But for one year, some of these are viable, and I would still prefer to go with the 14.878. I understand what you're saying, but...
I think that's probably bare.
Everything in there, I understand is needed, but for the one year, we're asking everybody else to bite. I think we could bite for one year and put these back on the table and go with the 14.878.
These are the names.
You go right ahead.
Some of these positions are child-related.
Right.
Most of them are, and that's what I'm saying. You know, I have no problem, but the difference between 921 and 878, I mean...
Is really minimal, but...
Right. And we're probably going to have to do something.
I mean, we are talking about to substantiate that. I mean, we're talking about aids for Barton and Chaffey.
And it's safe. Like Mr. Coonan said, it's crazy.
It's not, I mean, we're cutting staff at that point, too.
Go ahead, Mr. Himmelberger.
Just turn it to Mr. Matthew, just for clarification on that. The aids that were, the...
Your sublines.
The aids accounts that we're talking about on the playground aids, that's...
You won't call subs if people call in, sir.
Exactly.
Well, that's a safety issue.
I just want to make it clear.
I totally understand.
I understand, someone's leaving, but it is personnel.
And the tutors is only if we have the circumstance where we need those.
Mr. Himmelberger?
Just from that 14.921 that Mrs. Coonan had mentioned, the 14.878 represents the charge from the committee to comb through every line item and look and see. And we knew that that number was going to be small, because those line items have been combed for the last five years. And so whether it's 14.878, because that's the good faith best that we have at this stage of the game, or it's the 14.921, I think both of those numbers are valid at this time.
What is the committee's feeling on that? Mrs. DeWittsick?
My personal thing is to say the 14.921, only because I do believe that you will have to meet again after town meeting to come up with something. Is it going to matter if I'm at 14.921 and they come back at something lower, or 14.8? I manage to just say, this is what I need. That's what they want us to say to them, and this is our duty to tell them, this is what we need. And then you'll have to come through. And I think it's just being very honest with the finance committee and the town, saying, we've gone through everything. I'm not going to start taking out pages of books to try to get down $1,000, so that's my opinion.
No, it's a great opinion. So would you like to motion?
You did, and I second.
I did, but I did it for the...
I second it with amended. I second and amended.
You second and an amended?
Yep.
Okay, very good. So we have a motion on the table?
Yep.
Thank you, I appreciate that. Mrs. DeWittsick?
Yes.
Mrs. Coonan?
Yes.
Mrs. Ennis? Mr. Peterson?
No.
Okay, I'll vote yes. It's almost unanimous that we're going to go to town meeting with that number. And, Mr. Himmelberger?
Over the next week or two, we still may have opportunities to reduce that based upon discussion on transportation, based upon where the health insurance plan design goes as well, so...
But that's another thing, that I'm not holding a lot of credence in that, being part of our reduction. I'm really not, until I see it, right? Until I actually see it. So that, we're making a lot of guesses here, is what we're doing, and I don't particularly feel comfortable with that. So, you know, to Mrs. DeWittsick's point, I think that was a great motion, and we need to just go to town with that, tell them that we've done everything we can, this is what we need to educate your children, and strictly what it is. And if they say no, and this is what you get, then fine, we can come back and look at your tiers at that point. You know, because I just think that that shouldn't be happening.
[inaudible]
Yeah. Yeah. It's the day we have to get this into, right?
I think so, it's May 15.
Yes. We're going to have our public hearing on the budget, which really is pretty much what we're doing right now, because it's probably not going to change too much from where we are right now until the 25th, but we do have to hold a public hearing on it. That will be on April 25th, that we will actually post a public hearing on the budget. Hopefully, at that point, if we do have some reductions to come through, if the health insurance changes come through that will help us, that will all be included in our presentation on the 25th. Basically, I just, I think that we've all worked very, very hard to get where we are to this point, and I really will not give back what we've worked so hard for. And I can't even stress enough, through this whole process, how tough this has been for all of us. And every single person on this board, I've been on the board for six years, every single person on this board... Every single person on this board has supported adding teachers and reducing class size. We cannot educate our children without teachers. You know, we can cut the buses and they can walk to school so long as they have teachers to teach them. I, I can't tell you enough how important it is that we have the correct amount of teachers in our buildings. I just can't support anything that, that goes the other, the other route for me. So thank you all for your support on that. I really do appreciate it. And being aware of the comments on that, we can move on. Do we have any more comments from our superintendent schools?
Thank you, Mr. Spitz. I just have two uh quick items. Senator Moore's workshop and budget update was held today for all of his towns that he represents. And there was an interesting cross-section of town finance folks, superintendents, police chiefs, selectmen that were there. And what was disappointing was both he and Senator Bador, who is the vice chair of Senate Ways and Means, did not give us any estimates on how deep local aid would be. And I think that speaks to Mr. Peterson's point. And they also did not give us any indication that there would be significant health insurance relief and plan design before July first. And that's at the state level, where there's been a lot of talk about mapping municipalities to the GIC, obviously giving the, giving the towns and cities a level playing field with what the state has to offer. And um the, the increases from the GIC over the last ten years have been remarkably small compared to what municipalities have had to, to endure. So the news from that roundtable was not exactly encouraging. The other item I wanted to mention was the middle school project, the renovation project that we have in front of us at the middle school. On the website, there is a short nineteen, twenty-minute video clip that you can see which speaks to what's involved in that project. And this Saturday, from nine to eleven, we invite the community to come and walk through the middle school and see exactly what we are talking about that can be included in this project. We did get the project scope and pricing that came in at just under five-point-three million dollars. And the SBA, School Building Authority reimbursement percentage is at fifty-eight percent. So um those numbers give us a pretty accurate starting point for that project, which is very necessary to maintain the safety and the, the health of our staff and students that work in that building. So um again, I will be before the board of selectmen tomorrow night to explain that project to them. The article has been placed on the warrant for the town to either approve or disapprove. And um we will see where that goes. We certainly need a roof that will cost about one-point-one million. And that would be totally on the town's dime. The entire project at forty-two percent cost to the town would be somewhere around two-point-one million. So for an additional million dollars of cost, we would get all of that building completely renovated so it wouldn't have to be dealt with for the next twenty-five years or so. So that um is what is before the town at town meeting, to make that decision whether to proceed piece by piece, project by project, out of capital expense every year, or to do this project in partnership with SBA. And that's all I have.
Very good. Thank you very much.
Thank you, Mr. Spitz.
Anything at all from our business manager?
Nothing. More on the budget.
Mr. Peterson, why don't we start with you tonight?
Well, first off, uh, as I alluded to earlier, I was on Beacon Hill both Thursday and Wednesday. And I would like to thank our esteemed Senator Mr. Moore, who arranged the meeting with me, Rep. Naughton from Clinton, Senator Eldridge, and Senator Chandler. We had one senator blow us off, refused to meet with me, which I was totally, totally surprised. Senator Brewer was normally in our corner, kinda went in his hole and hid after the day. So I don't, I make no bones about it, he really wasn't available to talk to, all right? The others were, and I think it was great. I was so appreciative of them. And the figures that I got, that I gave to you, Mr. Himmelberger, are the latest as of one o'clock today through DOR, which I get pretty much every other day. I think you already know that. Every hour, we're, we're updated on our figures hourly, pretty much. I don't wanna be pessimistic, but I wanna be realistic also, so we don't just crash and burn here. On the positive note, Mrs. Hackett, you're here. Mr. Milner is here, I see. We, my wife and I attended the middle school play Thursday night. Phenomenal. I don't know where she comes up with them, but they get better and better every year. And the student participation that she gets, uh, I don't know, you can give me a figure, but I'll bet you over thirty percent of the, the student body participated in that, or close to it, in that musical. Fantastic job again through the middle school, the parents and the students. Thank you. I don't know, maybe I shouldn't, but Mrs. James, you're here tonight. And I read in the newspaper that your job is posted, all right? And I just wanna wish you well. I understand after talking to you that it's imminent retirement pending. You've been the ultimate for us as far as students are concerned, and I really appreciate the efforts and what you've done. I, I know you always have the right to change your mind, but good luck when you earn your retirement. Best wishes.
Mrs. Ennis.
I didn't know you were gonna retire.
None of us did.
Kinda sad about that, I have to say. Yeah.
Well, we hope she sticks around too, but if she doesn't
Change your mind? That's okay? You see what we're up against? You have, you have been terrific and a, and a great, you know, support and everything for the Project Coffee. So thank you so much. And I enjoy our friendship and everything, too, and that, that's always a plus for me when you get to make a friend or two here with the teachers and everything. So thank you very much. And if you do change your mind, it's all right with me. Again, uh, as Mr. Peterson said, having Molly be in the play was great. And seeing it all three nights, I know all the lines now. Plus, I had to go with the rehearsal at home, so it was great. And thank you, Mrs. Hackett, and Mr. Milner, and all the teachers and everything. The kids were just, there is a, there's a great group of lesbians at the middle school. And they're gonna come over to the high school and, and continue all that good work. It's just a great program. On another note towards town meeting, if the teachers that are here tonight, the members of the public that are here tonight, I would recommend and ask that you please implore parents to come to town meeting. That's the only way we're gonna get anywhere with this. That's the time where voices can be heard. And, and if we only have a hundred people there out of, what is it, almost nine thousand voters, you know, we're probably gonna get, I mean, I hate to be pessimist, but we'll probably be stuck in the, in the mud here. So take it back to your schools. Tell the parents, please, if they, especially if they have children in the schools. And that's all I have. Thank you very much.
Thank you very much. Mrs. Conan.
So basically, ditto of everybody. Best of luck to you.
Just being on the other end this time.
I know. That's what happens, huh? I'm usually second. The, the middle school play, if everybody that comes to town meeting or watches, you know, and hears about budgets and everything else, if they could, you know, come to some of these performances, you know, music, musicals at all the schools and the play, this is what it's all about. And that's what makes the well-rounded child that we all hope to cultivate and get to the next step in their life. And, you know, worrying about the stuff and, and the crayons being taken out of the budget, I think, is horrifying. Not to mention the people that are in the classroom, which is really what does it. So again, you know, echoing Mrs. Ennis, I hope that everybody that's a town resident, and even those of you that aren't, to come and support it because we've really gotta do something or, or the next couple of months are gonna be more tough than you can even imagine.
Mrs. DeWitt?
From last time.
You are, you're always first, so I, I change it up. I'm changing stuff up.
I echo everybody's statements, too. Um, I agree that we have to have everybody come out to town meeting. We have two important items. And the middle school project, that's huge. And I know that a lot of people came out for the dog pound, so I can only imagine when you think of children in those sweltering rooms that you would obviously think very highly of that scenario and look at what we've got there. Because there are some rooms that swelter there, too. The only thing I would ask the superintendent as we go through this budget process from now through town meeting is that we do what we have to do, unfortunately, prepare for the worst, hope for the best. And if that means unfortunately having messages sent that we might end up at fourteen-one, things, things, and everything, we'll say the bad word, then we have to do what we have to do to protect ourselves and them, too, to give them notice. But um know that we are fighting for our children, too. And that's all I have.
Great, thank you very much. Mr. Peterson, you should go again. You can take my
I know, I just, you know, I
It's not fun going first, huh?
Some of these meetings, I just wanna tell you that they're pretty much on our side. But this is, Mr. Himmelberger and I were talking about it before we sat down here tonight. The last time we physically had a budget in this state in March was under the Dukakis administration. So any of you that, match my white hair somewhere, go back and know that we have floundered. We tried to get the law changed, and even these senators that I met with again are looking at that, trying to get the law changed. So the state has to have their budget done before we do, so we have some real concrete figures. Just gotta keep flipping this thing around. I've been here long enough, I'd, I'd even had to wait till September to October first to get a state budget. And when I was first on the finance committee and school committee, we prepared three budgets, three wishes. And we stopped doing that because it became a waste of paperwork and meeting every, every Monday night. So we're trying to get some concrete figures, and we're trying to get the thing changed again. I don't hold out much hope for it, but at least they're sponsoring it. I'm gonna try to do something about it. So we have some concrete idea in the future. But we go through this every year. We have to have our budget done. It has to be submitted to the state by a certain point in time. But they can screw around point-blank until whenever they feel like it and get it done, all right? So bear with us, please. We'll try to, I, I will commend the, the committee. Education is our priority here, and that's what we're here for. We're gonna try to keep everything intact. And we worked hard to minimally reinstate things that have been cut since I've been here, so.
So it's you we can blame for all this.
No.
Well, since you have taken my time, Mr. Peterson, I'm gonna open the floor for comments. Does anybody have any comments they wanna share with the committee? Come right up. Do we have a mic for her there? It's a mini mic. Just please identify yourself so the home audience knows who you are.
I'm Valerie Zidemer. I'm a resident of the town, been a resident for many years. My kids went to school in the town, and I now work in the town. I wanna stay. I worked in two other school districts before Oxford. And I wanna say that they financially supported the schools so much better than Oxford. People stood behind what was needed. Class sizes were good. I was in one district where if the class size went over eighteen, the school committee meetings were jam-packed with parents saying, what are you doing here? And I just wanna say I thank you guys for saying, we need this money. Because we are, I think Oxford really is bare bones.
We are.
Yet to the other districts I've worked in, we are bare bones. We do not have a lot of extra support staff. You know, we've had, we've even cut staff over the last few years. Special education department has cut therapy staff. And, and, and all of you know, you hear on the news about kids with autism, the increase and this and that. We're getting more and more kids who have more severe special needs. And we have to educate, not have to, they deserve to be educated in their public school. And I just think that we really need to support the kids, all kids. And I just wanna thank you for saying, we need this money. I mean, we can't be getting rid of six people, eight people. We don't have extra. You know, we have, we have decent class sizes already.
Great. Thank you very much. We really appreciate your comment.
That's what I have to say. Thank you.
Do we have anyone else that would like to say anything? All right, being that there are no more other comments, um, I will close the floor. Tony, Tony, you wanna come up? You're always behind the camera, Tony. We need to get you in front of the camera on these things. Um, we have no request for executive session, so I would like to entertain a motion to adjourn.
So moved.
Do I have a second? Do we have a second, Mr. DeWitt?
Yes.
Mrs. Conan?
Yes.
Mrs. Ennis?
Yes.
Mr. Peterson?
Yes.
Oh, you gave us a yes now. Um, and I vote yes as well. We're now adjourned. Thank you all very much.